Good day. My name is Janet Wallace. I'm moderator for the Town of Kingston. And this is your Town of Kingston Moderator's Town Meeting Preview. Town Meeting will be held this year on Saturday, May 4th, 2019, at 9:00 a.m. at Kingston Intermediate School. There'll be additional dates that were pre-scheduled right now is for Tuesday, May 7th, 2019, at 7:00 p.m., and Thursday, May 9th, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. We're really hoping that it wouldn't exceed the Tuesday night meeting, but as we all know, we'll wait and see what happens on the floor. We have 45 articles that we'll be addressing. With me today is the Chairman of the Finance Committee, and this is Carl Pike. As I'm sure you all know, especially now they're publishing Finance Committee meetings, right?
Yes.
They're on record, so that's great. And there'll be an opening motion made, as it does every year. And that will provide, just so you know, there's going to be an exception this year, that Articles 40 through 45 will be heard on Tuesday, May 7th, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. That's been announced so much that that now is, the public has been given notice. We know that this deviates from the norm, however, the, with Elaine Fury on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and myself, discussed many citizens' concerns regarding last year and the marijuana debates that had occurred, and then the changes in amendments that happened on the floor. People felt they were confused, there wasn't notice, and different things were going on. So, we wanted to make sure that anybody that wanted to address these five Warren Articles could do so, and that they would know it's May 7th, 7:00 p.m., and that those would be heard at that time. As you know, the last year, as I said, it was Article 24, and it flipped, and all of that, and there was concern about that. So, we wanted to make sure that citizens were aware and were able to be there to debate and vote those articles. Though I hope that all citizens will come for all of Town Meeting and participate in the whole process.
Yes.
So, now, starting, Article 1 is Acceptance of the Annual Town Reports. Article 2 is our annual article, where we take current fiscal year 2019, that means this year, we take unused funds from one department to supplement another department's shortfall. This year, the number is $180,600. And you will see that the primary areas these are being taken from is not as much used in the health insurance area, $61,600, and then veterans and medical ordinary benefits of $95,000. And the increase this year was $150,000 paid over to the legal department. So, that has Board of Selectmen favorable 400, Finance Committee unfavorable 131. Carl, you want to give us a little bit on that one?
In general, the Finance Committee was taking the position, or at least three members were, that the $150,000 for legal expenses would appear to be exorbitant, and they felt that this was one way of saying that the Finance Committee does not like seeing the expenses at this level. I personally voted to pay the, to allow the transfer, because I believe vendors should get paid once they've done their work.
And as we know, there are contracts in place that they have to be paid, so. Article 3, I understand, though, people wanting to make a standard of position. Article 3 is our budget, ladies and gentlemen. That's the fiscal year 2020 budget. And this year, it's $49,332,453. And basically, that is all posted online as a separate document, so you can look at it on the warrant with line by line on the budgets, or it will be posted this weekend. There's been drafts up, right?
Yes.
There's drafts up, and Finance Committee will be finalizing that, and that should be available this weekend. And you'll see that this year, there's an increase of $1,877,67 from fiscal year 2019. Carl, now, we, no, I'm sorry.
I'd like to, right, I'll make a little change to that. The number that we're going with now is $1,213,000.
Great.
Because FY '19 was artificially inflated with the police and fire union contract amounts that we approved back in November. We've now reclassified the portion of that that applied to FY '18, back into FY '18. So, now, we've got comparable numbers between '19 and '20, and the real increase-
Is that because some of those payments were retroactive payments?
That's correct.
Because the contract had been pending, and so there was period time?
That's correct.
Okay, well, thanks for that clarification. Carl, I know we'll expect your State of the Town address to Town Meeting regarding the finances of the Town of Kingston. I know that Carl just gave me this press release. It is a press release regarding the budget for fiscal year 2020, and it is up now on the Town website, and you will see that there's a summary. This has been done by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. And as Carl said, sometimes it's a rocky road, but it's always for them to work together and reach a mutual agreement. There's a statement by our Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Elaine Fury, and there's a statement by Carl Pike, our Chairman of the Finance Committee. So, that would be worthy of everybody to go online and look at that press release that's been posted on our website. So, with all that said, I want people to be aware that we're going to have another little change, which is that, you know, everybody's been talking about reducing how long Town Meeting is, and so, one of the, I'm going to try a different approach with the budget this year. Kingston has traditionally read every line item, line by line by line, and I've spoken to other moderators, I've also seen other Town Meetings, and their moderators read the budget headings. So, we have 10 budget headings, and those are General Government, Public Safety, Education, Public Works, Health, Human Services, Culture, Regulation, Recreation, Retirement of Debt, Employee Benefits, Risk Management, and Non-Town Net Metering, which is really kind of just a flow-through anyhow.
Right.
But those are going to be the general topics, so I will read those. We'll have the same process. You'll yell "Hold," you'll stand, you'll be recognized, so I know your name. Your name then gets attached to that "Hold" for that particular budget heading. Then, when we go back and we will look at, we will then call the person who puts the "Hold" forward, and they will address any objections that they have under that heading, and we'll proceed under that manner. I think we might be able to chop a good 10 minutes off the time, just for that, not reading line by line, and we'll see how that works this year. As you know, we're always trying new things. Last year's question-only thing didn't work, but we're always trying new little things to-
And I think it's important to note that even though we're going to read it that way, the detail is maintained, the accounting, the controls going forward, the town will still be spending and accounting for their costs at a department level.
Correct, right. Each individual department under the heading?
Yes.
And when you get up, you will then be able to address, as you always have, personal services under any individual department expenses, however, you know, usually it's personal services and expenses, so. So, that will all be the same, so nobody will be deprived of any rights, we're just trying to not have to read the entire budget. Article 4 is our annual Water Department budget, and this year, you'll see that it's $1,600, wait a minute, I just did that, $1,637,022.54. You'll see that it's an increase in the, from fiscal year '19, of $64,772.23, $772.23. You'll see that the increases are primarily, are the primary items, so there was increase in personal services, expenses, and data processing, and the reductions were primarily debt servicing, insurance, and Treasury Department. So, that has a Board of Selectmen favorable 500, and Finance Committee favorable 500. And I meant to tell you, on the budget, of course, has Finance Committee approval 500. Board of Selectmen have not voted. The, though, we understand that they're in approval of it. Article 5 is our annual article regarding capital projects under the Water Department, and from there, retained earnings, they're looking to spend $300,000 on tank painting. If we notice, that's pretty much the annual, they have to keep those tanks up, and the painting of them is, helps to maintain them. That has a 500 vote favorable by both the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. Article 6 is the Sewer Department's annual budget, and this year, the Sewer Department's annual budget is six, I'm sorry, $3,369,597, which I note is a reduction from fiscal year '19 of $20,782, which was basically the reduction of debt servicing, was a reduction of $78,958, which covered the increases under expenses of $31,170, and additional personal services of $27,006. So, that's where we are. That has a Board of Selectmen favorable 501, and Finance Committee favorable 500. Article 7 is the annual capital projects for the Sewer Department, and on this one, they're looking to spend $196,336 for roof repairs, inspections, equipment, analysis, design, upgrades, and unforeseen expenses to operate the wastewater treatment plant. And that has a Board of Selectmen vote 401, and a Finance Committee vote 500. Article 8 is our, is the KWI turbine article, and this is the Renewable Energy Enterprise Fund. So, I do want to, this is a flow-through. It's basically, the energy generated by the KWI on the capital landfill is sold to EverSource. EverSource reimburses the town. The town then pays the vendor under the purchase power agreement, and it is allowing up to $500,000, because I know at one point, this was $200,000, and now, this is going up to $500,000. But the actual flow is whatever it amount, I think it's what, do you remember, recall, what those amounts have been over the period, like?
They've been less than $500,000.
Oh, yeah. I was from recent, 120 was sticking to my head. And that has a Board of Selectmen favorable, and Finance Committee favorable, both votes 500.
Correct.
Article 9 is our elected official salary article, and you'll see that the stipend elected official salaries, there's been no changes. I don't think I need to read it. It's basically, I get 100, and then Chairman of the other boards and commissions, I'll get 1,000, and the members get 800. The elected officials category is the actual employee, employed elected officials, our collector, tax collector, treasurer, and town clerk. And what this year, they've done is equalize the income for the collector, the treasurer, and the clerk, and so, it's an overall increase of $7,760, is what I'm seeing from fiscal year 2019.
Yeah, what we did on this is we've recommended increases of 2.45% for the collector and treasurer, and then 6.29% for the town clerk, to get all three positions to the same level, which we thought was fair.
Okay. And that has a favorable Finance Committee vote of 500, and it has a favorable vote from the Board of Selectmen, but only as to the stipend positions only. The Board of Selectmen has not voted in regard to the elected officials, so I expect to hear, we'll hear from the Board of Selectmen on the floor-
On the floor, yes.
-of Town Meeting regarding that. Article 10 is the Wage and Personnel Article, and this is, has an increase this year of $49,518. And it's for, $44,364 would be raised and appropriated from taxes. The $3,236 would be from water revenues and for the Water Department employees, and $1,918 is from wastewater revenues for the wastewater department employees. I direct you to see the schedules that are posted online. Schedule A sets the rate per positions. Schedule B1 sets the hourly rate for hourly employees. Schedule B2 sets the rate for salaried employees. And then Schedule C, 1 through 3, sets forth what positions in town are hourly, so that everybody can kind of know directly in regard to what that is all of-
And it really comes down to a combination of a cost of living increase and step increases per the schedules.
And so, there's been, were there any changes in the schedules? It was mostly just the ongoing application, because I know they did a big revamping of wage and personnel last-
Last year, correct.
So, that was a big revamping of where everybody was at and all of that, and now, this was just the, like you said, the cost of living and the step increases. Article 11 is the Elizabeth B. Sampson Fund article, annual article, and this is that the interest of, from the Elizabeth B. Sampson Fund, Elizabeth Sampson left money to the Town of Kingston to be held, and the interest is to be expended on specific educational or municipal items that would benefit the town. So, this year, it's a total of expenditures of $28,844.50, and that is the Bradford House video of $5,000. That is to assist the Bradford House, is going to be doing historic video, and it's going to be hopefully rolling out, I mean, for them in general, but also for 2020. They'll be able to post it, and they've agreed to post it on the Town website, so all of that will be available to us. The agricultural fare for the police detail of $500. The waterfront festival, police and EMT details of $1,000. The construction down at Millikins Landing, and that's constructing the, the, what do you call that? The wooden thing that goes out.
Part of the docks, I believe.
Thanks, yeah, the docks. I'm like, I couldn't come up with that. $4,500, the Christmas luminaries for the Kingston Fire Department of $3,000. National night out for the Kingston Police Department of $6,000. The historic room display cases, I'm hoping the library's going to be able to put some of those up at Town Meeting, if they can handle the security and the issues that will need be addressed at, so you might be able to see some artifacts at Town Meeting in the hallway before you come in. And part of this is to show you what these historic room display cases look like, to hold the artifacts, to keep them preserved, as well as to make them so that they could be on display in the, for the public side at the library. That's $1,396.50. The Grays Beach movie nights for $4,648. If you haven't been down, you gotta go, it's a blast. The Memorial Day Parade of $2,800. That has Board of Selectmen favorable 311, and Finance Committee favorable 500. Capital Planning, Article 12, is Capital Planning Annual, and that's for their capital projects. The total will be, what did I have here? The total is $488,500. And just for everybody to know, $323,928 comes from the meals taxes that the Town of Kingston receives, that have been by a prior 2011 annual Town Meeting vote, voted that all meals taxes revenue would be paid to a stabilization, stabilization fund for capital projects. And so, that $323,928 automatically goes towards that, and then, there's an additional expenditure of $164,572 from free cash. What that is basically providing for is $14,000 for one Smith Lane fire vehicle, fire station vehicle exhaust system, and that has a favorable Board of Selectmen 400, Finance Committee 500, Capital Planning 310. There's a $45,500 to purchase and install two Smith Lane fire station boiler pumps and tanks. That has Board of Selectmen approval 400, Finance approval, I just jumped that, yeah, Finance Committee approval of 500, Capital Planning of 400. There's $35,000 to purchase assessing Vision Version 8 software upgrade, and that's for the assessors department. That has Board of Selectmen approval 400, Finance Committee 500, and Capital Planning 400. There is $72,500 to purchase 25 portable radios. This is for the police department. I think this finalizes the purchase of them, right? I believe this is finalizing it.
That's correct. The Fire, but the Fire Department was done already, and now, that's correct.
Last two, yeah, the last two, okay. Board of Selectmen vote 301, Finance Committee 500, Capital Planning 400. $25,000 to pay down for the, for the down payment and first full year of a three-year lease for the purchase of a Ford F-150 fire command vehicle. Board of Selectmen vote 400, Finance Committee 500, Capital Planning 400. $100,000 to purchase two Ford SUV patrol cars for the police department, and that is Board of Selectmen 301, Finance Committee 500, and Capital Planning 400.
I might add on that one, that the Finance Committee did a lot of work, looking at the average miles put on the police vehicles each year, and we've come to the conclusion, and I think the Capital Planning Committee agrees, that we really do need to be able to fund two new police vehicles each year here in Kingston.
In order to keep up with them and the mileage that they put on them?
Correct.
Okay. And, and of course, that's what your Finance Committee does. They oversee and overlook and look at all of these different things, so we're obviously very grateful for all of your members that are on the Finance Committee for that extra oversight. $35,500 to pay for the second full year of five-year lease that purchased a Volvo front-end loader, loader for the Streets, Trees, and Parks Department. That's Board of Selectmen 400, Finance Committee 401, Capital Planning 400. $28,500 net of an $8,000 trade, with a trade-in allowance, to purchase a Mahindra, I think it's called, Mahindra?
Yes.
Tractor for the school, and that's KES, K-I-S. Board of Selectmen 400, Finance Committee 500, Capital Planning 400. Then, $132,500 to pay for the third and final year of a lease that purchased the two ambulances for the Fire Department. That's Board of Selectmen 400, Finance Committee 500, Capital Planning 400.
And we should put an emphasis on this being the final year for that $132,000 payment, but also, it's been, from my point of view, it's proved to be an excellent purchase, that we've increased the annual revenue from the leased ambulance services by about $300,000 a year.
Wow.
So, and that goes into the general fund of the town, and so, it's a profitable venture.
That's great. Article 13 is the annual article for expending funds from the, from the stabilization funds capital project. This year, it's $425,000, and that is for $50,000 for the Townhouse Archives and Organizational Services. That has a Board of Selectmen 400, Finance Committee unfavorable 050. Can we talk about that?
Yeah. This is a situation where the Finance Committee believes that this is a good project sometime in the future. Our position is that we're not ready to recommend spending the $50,000 just yet, that we would prefer to see more internal departmental work, you know, seeing what the departments can do to throw stuff out that's not needed, to, to clean out. It's, this all involves the attic here in the Townhouse, trying to get rid of a lot of the old stuff up there, have better record-keeping, and our feeling is that let's do more internally first, and then come back and look at having the town finance a project.
Okay. Then, we have $15,000 for the codification services for the town clerk. I know that's mandated to be done every so many years. It's to codify all of our bylaws and general bylaws and all of that. So, this is Board of Selectmen 400, Finance Committee 500. Then, we have $50,000 for KIS, KES, one-time equipment purchase, that's our schools. And do you know what that equipment is for?
What we've tried to do, in, in trying to keep the school budgets as tight as we can, the last three or four years, we've tried to provide some free cash money for them to actually buy computers, update software, mostly all technology-related.
Great. And that has a Board of Selectmen favorable 400, Finance Committee favorable 500. Stormwater permit compliance, $75,000 through the Conservation Department, and that has a Board of Selectmen 400, Finance Committee 140. So, can you give me a little feedback on the stormwater permit?
The majority, this is something that we've been talking about for at least three years now, that there are some state mandated compliance requirements. It now appears that it has to be done. The, some of the Finance Committee members were concerned that there was already some money in, set up to do this, and it's going to be a five-year program, would, some of the other members would prefer to utilize the money that's already been set up and to hold off on this particular-
So, use up what's already been allocated before you use up, or allocate it?
Reallocate more, yes.
And then, there'd be $30,000 for landscaping services pilot program, and that's through the Streets, Trees, and Parks. Board of Selectmen 400, Finance Committee 140.
Finance Committee believes that this is a, a new program, and we're not willing to support it. We believe that we should continue to mow the lawns and do that through the Streets, Trees, and Parks Department personnel. One of the thoughts we had, if there's a real issue, then mow the lawns every two weeks instead of weekly.
Okay. And then, there's $200,000 for the Kingston Elementary School roof repair. We've been hearing about this, so this wasn't an unusual and unexpected expense. Board of Selectmen 400, Finance Committee 500.
The, the good thing on that item is that the Massachusetts School Business Association came out here this past week to actually assess the roof. We had submitted a, the school system submitted a request for a grant that would, if the grant's received, it'll probably pay about 45% of the total cost. This $200,000 is what will be needed if, in fact, the grant is received. The $200,000 is for the initial engineering and design studies.
Great, so there's a grant behind it. Then, we have Historic Commission $5,000 for the events signage for Kingston's participation in the Plymouth 2020. We have Board of Selectmen 400, Finance Committee 320. Article 14, Authorization for the Total Limits of the Expenditures from the Revolving Funds. So, this is, if you remember, last year, we created these accounts. So, this is Recreation Program. What, I didn't mean that, actually, we just amended them, but, so, it's $500,000 for the Recreation Department. That's increasing it by $175,000, because they're consolidating both the 54D and the 53E and a half, so two accounts are getting rolled into one, and that's why that expenditure went up to that amount. It's Board of Selectmen approval 500, Finance Committee is 050. Do you want to address them all at the end?
Yes.
Because you kind of have the same, okay.
Yes.
And then, there's $125,000 for Inspeckional Services. Board of Selectmen 500, Finance Committee 050. $50,000, Senior Center Programs. Board of Selectmen 500, Finance Committee 050. And $50,000, Board of Selectmen 5, oh, I'm sorry, Adams Center Programs. Board of Selectmen is 500, Finance Committee is, again, unfavorable 050. So, can you tell me what the Finance Committee's position on negative?
The Finance, when the Finance Committee first saw this, we voted just one time, and we voted against the article mainly because of the Recreation Programs expenditures being increased from, I don't have the number right here, but I want to say from like $350,000.
Yeah, it went up $175,000.
Okay, so, from three and a quarter to 500. And the Finance Committee just does not feel that it was necessary to increase it to that extent. We, we do not want to see that many funds going through without having more oversight.
Okay. Article 15 is a new article, creating revolving funds. And so, historically, these revolving funds were income, or the revenue was placed in the general fund, and now, what they're doing is looking to create new revolving funds, which would be a Conservation Fund, which receives local filing fees for Conservation Commission for all of the filings through them, and this would be used to support, manage, and maintain conservation properties. And the Wetlands Protection Fund, which would, again, receive revenues from local filings. Now, under the Conservation Fund, Chapter 40, Section 8(c), allows the town to do this, it use, the use for, to take those funds and use those funds purposes under the law, which is for maintaining and management of conservation properties. The Wetlands Protection one, it already exists today, there's $50,000. It was a housekeeping from 1998 to change the law, that the Wetlands Protection Act, and both of the expenditures have a limit of $15,000 each year from those funds, without getting Town Meeting approval, is my understanding of that. So, that's where we were at for that. Board of Selectmen is 500, Finance Committee was 140 unfavorable.
This one's a little difficult. I personally recommended approval for both of these. The rest of the Finance Committee was in support of the Wetlands Protection Fund one, that that's nothing more than getting the legal accounting up to date with the practice. The concern was that the Conservation Fund, if $15,000 flows through here for expenditure purposes, it's $15,000 worth of revenue-
Funding fees, right.
-funding that will be coming out of the general funds, so that it really would be costing an additional $15,000.
Well, wouldn't you transfer some of the budgetary department expenses under Conservation or from another department under properties?
We-
If they're not coming out of this, would there be an offset for that?
There could be, there could be. That's what we would be looking for, correct.
All right. Article 16 is, we're going to break that into, this is our CPC article, so, we're going to divide that into four separate motions. I know they're all under one, but we are going to actually do them and vote them separately. So, Motion 1 is our typical CPC funds, being put into the three buckets, open space, historic preservation, community housing, and the second half of that is their administrative budget of $15,414.27. And Motion 2 is from open space funds, $44,324 for the playground fencing to meet what Recreation has asked for, is the best practice standard. That would be the fencing at Grays Beach, at the Captain Frederick, I want to make him a C, is it C. Frederick L. or C. Bailey Playground? That's the one behind the Reed. And that has a Board of Selectmen 500 favorable, and Finance Committee 320. And I meant to tell you, on the other one, the other vote was 500 favorable action by all, 600 by CPC. And on this one, it's 501 on the CPC vote. Motion 3 is open space, $55,903 of funds for the restoration and rehab of the infield at the Givoni baseball fields. Those are the ones that are up by Mid-Cape, right? And that would be Board of Selectmen favorable 500, Finance Committee favorable 500, Community Preservation Committee favorable 501. Motion 4 is for historic preservation funds of $8,000 to hire a contractor, to research, complete, submit, and oversee the process, to acquire national historic registry status for the Font School, which is circa 1844. for the Font School, which is circa 1844, and the Powder House circa 1804. This has Board of Selectmen favorable 500, Finance Committee unfavorable 500, and CPC favorable 600.
Finance Committee gets concerned whenever you talk about turning something into a historical place, that could that result in making it more difficult and more expensive anytime we were going to make any repairs?
They then have to be under the historical...
If we decided, if we decided sometime in the future that we wanted to sell or get rid of those two buildings, or one or the other, could that be an additional cost? So that's why we said we did not recommend approval.
Okay. Article 17 is the Police Sergeant's Contact. For that article is not going to be moved. Article 18 seeks $10,000 into the Employee Liability Reserve Fund to cover accrued sick in vacation time when employees leave. The maximum allowed in the count is $50,000. Currently, we have $10,178.33. We're looking to add $10,000 to it. That has Board of Selectmen favorable 500, Finance Committee favorable 410. And is this, under Finance Committee, is this help bond rating or is this accounting? Or what are we doing with this?
This is really just an accounting item, that when a full-time employee retires, let's say that he's got a vacation liability of $10,000. Normally, that $10,000 becomes an additional expense. By creating this reserve fund, you take the expense on an annual basis. Then when somebody leaves, you just charge it to the reserve fund.
Great. Article 19 is our OPEB Annual Article. This fund was created in 2010, in our town meeting, to satisfy the requirements of the government to fund post-retirement benefits for employees. This year, we're seeking $50,000 to deposit into the fund. The current liability is over $42 million, and the current account balance is $370,000. So this would add $50,000 to this. This is Board of Selectmen favorable 400 and Finance Committee favorable 500. And now this one helps our bond rating.
Absolutely.
By continuing to make sure that we're meeting our potential future liability.
That we know it's a big liability, and we're trying to do something about it. It's the same way that the pension liability used to be handled. And that will be fully funded, believe it or not, in 2028, I believe. And so this here one, I would suspect by that time, the state will have come out with some rulings.
Article 20, Annual Stabilization Fund Article, seeks to transfer $100,000 to the Stabilization Fund from free cash. This is basically the Town of Kingston savings account. So I know the Town of Kingston's goal has been to have 7% of the adjusted omnibus budget, and that's about $2.8 million. We currently have $2,431,541.3 in that account. So with this deposit, we'll bring it closer to 2.5 million, over 2.5 million. So we're getting closer.
Right.
That has favorable action by Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee of 500. Article 21 is our Chapter 90, Annual Allocation of the State Chapter 90 Funds to Use Towards the Roadway Infrastructure Improvements. Again, it's just a standard vote. This has Board of Selectmen 401 favorable, Finance Committee 500 favorable. Article 22 is a PAC TV show, is, just so you know, there was a PAC TV show aired on April 12, 2019, and it dealt with the Pound of Kingston's Economic Development Plan under this one. This is the wastewater treatment plan expansion. So it's to expand the town's wastewater treatment plant capacity. And the intent of the Board of Selectmen is to allow business growth, both at the mall, this is the hotel, and all of that. This will require a three, a two-thirds majority vote. And basically, what we're, what it's looking for is $28 million. And it will be, there is borrowing, so I want you to realize that there's borrowing involved in this. The borrowing would be at 2.5% interest through the state. And the intent, and I want to read this section, "While the debt issued pursuant to the authority of this vote will be a general obligation of the town pursuant to general bylaws, it is the town's intent that the debt serviced on such debt be paid in the first instance from the combination of state and federal grants," which there's been a $3 million grant already awarded. "There is betterment assessments on new users," so this would be all new users, "assessments and connection fees, except for any extent of treatment capacity that's reserved for town use." So the intent is, is that all new users, this will be funded by grants, new users that want to buy the use of the, through betterments. Excuse me. And the only exception would be, is the town reserves any, and I understand for the 55 unit of senior housing potentially at the old Maple Street Station. So there might be some reservation by the town under that. And I know the affordable housing wants to try to take some reservation as well to meet the affordable housing. So that will be addressed on Article 22. I refer you to PAC TV in regard to watching or re-watching the airing of that show.
There was also last night, a forum. The wastewater people had an open forum. I wasn't able to attend it, but they had a forum, I think it was right here.
Okay, great. Article 23 is the Grassy Hole Well Manganese Removal Plant. As you know, we already did the Trackle Pond Well Manganese Removal Plant. And so this is for $6,992,000 in borrowing. It requires a two-thirds majority vote. And this is, again, I think we know, everybody pretty much knows about manganese. Board of Selectmen 500 favorable, Finance Committee 500 favorable. Article 24 is to town, authority to the town to lease two lots for electronic billboards. This will also require a two-thirds majority vote because it's involving a lease. And this is, would be two lots, one on Route 3, Cranberry Road, one on Route 44, Monks Hill Road. And this will allow them to put up and lease out, for people to put up electronic billboards. And the town estimates that it'll be $175,000 yearly generated income. So of course, Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee have both voted 500 favorable action. Article 25 is a town, authority to the town to lease two lots for solar array. These are up at the Offal Pits, off of, I want to say Rehoboth, and I'm always doing that, Rabith Road. And on this one, the town estimates about a $75,000 yearly generated income. And again, two-thirds vote because of the lease. This has Board of Selectmen 401 favorable vote, Finance Committee 302 favorable vote. Article 26 is tied to Article 25. If Article 25 passes, then will, the town will be moving to amend the zoning bylaw. And again, this is to just amend the zoning map, I'm sorry, not bylaw, the map, to show for the installation of the solar arrays down at the Offal Pits. So again, two-thirds majority vote because it's dealing with the zoning map. Board of Selectmen 401 favorable, Finance Committee 302. Obviously, if the Article 25 doesn't pass, Article 26 won't be moved. Article 27 is the article to change the tax from 4% to 6% for the local room occupancy excise tax. And this one is basically, as it says, just increasing the level of the tax. This has Board of Selectmen favorable 500, Finance Committee favorable 500. Article 28 is going to be postponed, awaiting state action. This one will not be moved. Article 29, under the Municipal Modernization Act, I'm sure everybody's heard that a couple of times, has changed many municipal provisions, and this is to adopt the changes to Chapter 32B, Section 20. And this is to post-employment benefits. The state requires the town to use these new provisions. So it's just adopting the new provisions of this law. Board of Selectmen is 500 favorable, Finance Committee is 500 favorable. Article 30 is to adopt Chapter 44, Section 53F and 3/4, which establishes a specific reserve fund. The current fees collected, this is the PAC TV, I'm sorry, I should have said that. This is to adopt a new reserve fund, and this is basically to address the new laws that Department of Revenue. Currently, fees collected go directly to PAC TV. As of July 1, 2019, Department of Revenue now wants the fees that are paid to go to the town, and then the town to pay them to PAC TV, under the可比 television agreement contract that we have with them. So it's going to be another money in, money out. It's mostly just an accounting. I know it will increase our accounting mechanism, but that's just to accommodate. Board of Selectmen favorable 500, Finance Committee favorable 500. Article 31 is to adopt Chapter 59, Section 5, which is the property exemptions. It's going to allow the town to grant tax exemptions to surviving parents or guardians of our soldiers and sailors, National Guard members, and veterans. So this is to, basically, it'll be somewhat equivalent to what's permitted to be done under property taxes. This has favorable Board of Selectmen 500, favorable Finance Committee 410. Article 32, adopt Chapter 83, Section 16G, and this is to allow, I'm sorry, that's the prior one, I was doing that, never mind. Allow the sewer, it was this one that's to allow the same under the Property Division. Anyhow, allow the sewer commission mechanism to defer user fees for qualified people. So this is what the one that's like, right now, you can defer to property taxes. This is going to allow the sewer department to be able to defer user fees for qualified people. And that's what this is about. This is from Board of Selectmen favorable 500, Finance Committee favorable 500. And I, obviously, it's not the same under the soldiers and sailors. Article 33 is to amend the general bylaws, Chapter 4, Article 11, meeting schedules. Now, this is a new general, it's to amend it, but it's creating a new bylaw that would require boards, committees, and commissions that meet more than twice a year to establish a meeting schedule at least six months in advance and post it on the website. Now, this is to establish the schedule. Clearly, there can be changes to the schedule as a result of other things, but this is to try to get it so there'd be more notice to citizens regarding board meetings, committee meetings, and commission meetings.
I'm going to take the Fifth Amendment on this one.
That would require the Finance Committee to post theirs six months in advance. Board of Selectmen is favorable 500, it is their article. Article 34 is to amend the general bylaws, Chapter 4, Article 22. And this is regarding, again, to create a bylaw for the composition and purposes, purpose of the Recreation Commission. Right now, the composition, it's to make a composition, is five committee members elected by ballot with three-year terms. The purpose and policy is that they shall be advisors to the Recreation Department. They shall have to prepare annual reports to the Board of Selectmen. The Recreation Committee, Commission was established back in 1987, and this is now just going to codify and make some rules and regulations. This has Board of Selectmen 500 favorable action. Article 35, I was just looking up at the clock myself.
Yeah.
Because we're a little behind there, and now we've caught up again.
Doing well.
Article 35 is to amend the general bylaw for Chapter 10, Article 5, and that is for animal control. This article is to increase the mandatory number of staff per number of dogs at any canine daycare center. And so it was one staff member per 25 dogs. They're now looking to increase it to two staff members per 10, 15 dogs, per 15 dogs. This has favorable action by the Board of Selectmen 500. Article 36 is, is an article to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant a perpetual easement on Nick's Rock Road. If you remember, and because, again, it's an easement, it's property impacting property, this is requires a two-thirds majority vote. Saxton, this is, if you all remember, this is the Saxton Partners land, their colony place. So this would allow access to the town, to a town-owned parcel of land for future development. So this is part, again, of things that the Board of Selectmen's trying to put into play for economic development. And so this has favorable action by the Board of Selectmen 500. Article 37, this is a petition article by Bill Maribito, and this is to amend the general bylaw regarding town meeting. As you know, we've previously voted in that town meeting time is the, or town meeting will be run pursuant to town meeting time. And, but as we all know, we've also, Kingston has its own little practices and customs of Kingston's town. And this is seeking to amend some of those what have become customary practices. So there'll be no congregating in the aisles. You will ride, you will stay in your seat, you will rise in place for the moderator to call upon you. You will state your name, moderator will acknowledge you, you will then get called to the floor, and then you will debate at that point. The other issue is that there would be a fair debate, so pros and cons. So if all the pros, if all the people are debating is all pro, and there's no cons, you'd end debate. Towns do that, they use, some towns have pro and con mics, and then you just see what's going on with that. That there be no impertinent, superfluous, or tedious discussions, and that there be no cross-examination of town officials on town meeting floor. This has Board of Selectmen vote favorable 311. Again, petition article by a citizen. Article 38 is a petition article by, again, by Bill Maribito, and this is to abolish the motion to reconsider. Kingston has a long history of typically, the prevailing party or opponent, proponents of the article would use to lock in the positive vote or the negative vote, so it cannot be reopened at a later time during town meeting. Ironically, town meeting time requires that the prevailing party, requires that a prevailing party make the motion. However, it's always been a custom by most moderators, and under the Moderators Association, you can't stand there and ask somebody, "Did you vote in favor of this article?" It becomes a very uncomfortable and very difficult process of asking people, "Did you notice their vote, blah, blah, blah?" So it's never really been done. This article is to abolish the use overall, and therefore, once one vote is taken on an article, that's the vote, folks. There'll be no reconsideration. So that will be up. Article 39 is a petition article by Peter Bonsek. That's to amend the general bylaws regarding town meeting as well. And Mr. Bonsek, I know, indicated to me that he used language from Wayland that proposed this action. If you all want to know, it's basically like an Australian ballot is what he's proposing. It would be a secret ballot. We would still have town meeting, we would still have the debates, but you just wouldn't vote on town meeting floor. The vote, some of, some of the articles would be voted on town meeting floor, but there would be a vote at a ballot for specific articles chosen by the Board of Selectmen to go to a secret private ballot, or requested by registered voters, may petition the Board of Selectmen to ask that a specific article be taken by ballot. And the intent of this article is to increase the number of voters who would actually vote on town business. As you know, right now, sometimes we're lucky to get the 100 quorum. A lot of times, most of the time, we're running around 200 people are voting for, what are we, 14, 15,000 now? So that's what that intent of that article is. Now, Article 40 starts us on, this is the Marijuana Section, as I'm going to call it. And so as of, I just want everybody to be aware, May 1, next Wednesday, well, actually, Wednesday, May 1, at Town Hall here at 7:00, there's going to be a Marijuana meeting. Kate Fettero from our Town Council's office, she is the guru on Marijuana statute, Marijuana bylaws. She's written most of the bylaws for all of her towns. She will be present to discuss what's the current going on in regard to Marijuana law and all of that. So I behoove everybody to come and be, participate in it. I'll be here myself, just so that everybody can come up to speed on what's going on. So this is a petition article by David Koeng. This is Article 40. This will require a two-thirds majority vote because it's amending the zoning bylaw. So it's looking to amend the zoning bylaw to delete Section 4.21 Marijuana Establishments provision. So it's looking to completely delete the section so that there is no provisions in our zoning bylaw regarding Marijuana establishments. This has no vote from either Board of Selectmen or Planning Board, I'll vote on the floor. But I want everybody to be aware, there's a recent Chelton case that addresses the conflict with zoning bylaw and general bylaws. And the zoning bylaw, because it's a two-thirds vote, when you amend a zoning bylaw, it requires a two-thirds vote. When you amend a general bylaw, it's only a majority vote. So the court weighed in and said, from that issue, we're going to give great weight to the zoning bylaw because it requires more voters to have voted it in, so it should be given greater weight. So that's a new case that just came down. There was an AG decision on April 1, 2019, on a land court case coming out of Brewster, that denied, that a denial of a general bylaw, denying, denying a general bylaw being after the town voted zoning bylaws. So with that in mind, the Town of Kingston switched these two articles on Mr. Koeng. And so Mr. Koeng, the first one will be zoning, and the second one will be, the, the next one, 41, will be general bylaw. And that's because you can't vote a prohibition of a general bylaw if a zoning bylaw is there. So they just want to make sure that with this new land court, AG decision ruling on the land court case, that, that we would be in a proper position for these articles to actually happen. So that's what's happening. So the first Article 40 will be a zoning bylaw, two-thirds vote. So that would be to abolish the zoning, all zoning requirements. Article 41, then, is only a majority vote to amend the general bylaws of Chapter 60, removing Article 7 Marijuana. And basically adding a provision that says, "All Marijuana establishments will be prohibited in the Town of Kingston." So this is now, these two articles together, one will require a two-thirds vote, one will require a majority vote, would have to pass in order to abolish and make the Town of Kingston no longer a Marijuana town. So just for everybody to understand how this will all lay out. Article 40, too. Now, depending on what happens on Article 40 and 41, Article 40 may not pass, may not be moved. If Article 40 and 41, if the zoning bylaw is voted through and it's abolished, and then the general bylaw is voted, and there's a prohibition against Marijuana, then Article 40, and technically all of the other articles, can't be heard because you can't amend something that no longer exists. So Article 40 is a planning board article, and it's to amend our zoning bylaws, Section 4.21, which is... Section four point two one, which is marijuana establishments, and the general bylaw, Chapter sixty, Article seven, to remove the location where minors congregate. There was some language about minors congregating, and there was issues of, is that bus stops, is that not? Though the court had ruled on whether or not bus stops, even though minors are congregating waiting for the bus, it wasn't considered a minors congregating. But anyhow, to remove that language from there, and then to allow in the commercial industrial zone to have marijuana establishments five hundred feet from a school. That would be in the commercial industrial zone, which would basically be, you know, on that one, would be, I believe that's Moxie's, right up on one oh six. And then to allow it in the commercial zone, a thousand feet from Marion, did I just converse those, thousand feet on commercial zone? No, that's right. So it would be five hundred feet for commercially zone and five, thousand feet for commercially zone, five hundred for industrial, commercial, industrial park. And so the, the commercial zone would be Marion Drive, the old Mid-Cape Center down on Route fifty-three, and I believe the old Calhoun Junkyard. So those would be that, so that's what the planning board is looking to get passed, and that has Board of Selectmen have no vote, Planning Board has a four zero zero vote. And again, because they're seeking to amend the zoning bylaw and the general bylaw, we will break that out to two motions because they have two different voting standards. So Motion one will be the zoning bylaw, requires two-thirds vote. Motion two was the general bylaw, requires a majority vote. So again, there'll be two votes on that in regard to the difference between the zoning and that is establishments, and then there's the general bylaw. So we'll be clear about that. Article forty-three is a petition article by Craig Dalton, and this is to amend the zoning bylaw, four point two one four, which is the location. Part of it is a cleanup, he's adding, you know, removing an or adding a colon or, and then the other is to add the, for where marijuana retailers, to add public parks to where they can be located or not be located.
Right.
And then the same under the other one, which is the, that craft marijuana, so that was marijuana retailers, but also under craft marijuana cultivators and, and manufacturers. Again, a cleanup provision, but then also a public parks provision, so that they can't be within those of public parks. So that's adding schools, kindergartens, those type of places would add public parks. This will require a two-thirds vote, and the Board of Selectmen has not voted, Planning Board has voted four zero zero favorable action. Article forty-four is a petition article by David Coing, and this is to amend the zoning bylaw, and that's four point two one point four, and that is location, and it is to prohibit any marijuana establishments within a hundred feet of a residence. So this is to amend the zoning bylaw, to make a restriction, no marijuana establishments within a hundred feet of a residence. So that's whether or not it, because some of those, you know, as you know, some of these are, are zones overlap each other, so you can have residential right into a business in commercial, and then, and that's how it works. So this is to limit it from a hundred feet from any residence. Neither the Board of Selectmen nor the Planning Board have voted on this matter, so we'll wait for that to occur on the floor, and that requires a two-thirds majority vote, again, because it's a zoning bylaw change. We have the adopt, Article forty-five is an article by the Board of Selectmen. It's to adopt Chapter sixty-four N, Section three. This is a marijuana tax provision. So this is to allow the town to impose a three percent local sales tax on the sale or transfer of marijuana. Clearly, I almost think this one, the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee are both five zero zero favorable action. Well, it's almost, that one's almost a no-brainer, right?
If you're going to do it, let's get some money from it.
Right. So I mean, that would, was the whole intent of this, was for business development or gaining revenues for the Town of Kingston. We're going to have marijuana establishments, let's tax them so that the Town of Kingston can benefit from having them in the Town of Kingston. So that would allow us to do a three percent tax, and like we had before, when you're looking at that, we have the sales tax that goes into a stabilization fund in order to fund capital projects for the Town of Kingston. So this year, it's three hundred and twenty-three thousand from the mail tax. This is the same three percent, don't know, but we've been watching the news on all these other towns that seem to be generating an incredible amount of income, or the businesses are. And so, of course, that impacts why everybody wants it a thousand, why people don't want it, you know, the traffic, everything else that will happen in the Town of Kingston. So all of that will be discussed in, but obviously, if we're going to be a marijuana town, this one to me is kind of an over.
And to me, if this three percent was voted and we started to recover three percent, then there might be a time at a town meeting, we'd want to identify this three percent as being used to fund the capital plan or to fund something else.
Right.
Specifically.
Right. And I mean, we're always having issues with the school in regard to the special needs and all of those, and we got, you know, those are exponentially increasing every year, and we always want to make sure that we have those services, we're required by law to provide them. So again, if it's going to be there, and like you said, we can later in another town meeting decide if, like, the meals tax, it would go into a stabilization fund or whatever. Right now, it's just if we're going to have them, going to happen, let's get some tax on it.
Right.
In doing that, so. Again, that has Board of Selectmen favorable action five zero zero, and Finance Committee favorable action five zero zero. So I remind you both, watch the cable TV preview regarding the wastewater expansion. I think that's a very important one. And then also, just for everybody to have the information they need to actually be able to vote. So I also remind you all that town meeting will be held on May fourth, Saturday, May fourth, starting at nine a.m., Kingston Intermediate School. Something of interest, all of the articles are on, and motions are on the website at the Town of Kingston. I'm going to ask people, if you want, we want to be efficient at town meeting, that's one of the issues that come up, let's be efficient. So one, get up when you want to debate and be concise, get to the point, say what you want to say, and get to the point, and just get up there and do it. Because we're going to have the two minutes, I'm going to be very tight on them, no more than two minutes per person, two minutes up at the mic, I mean, two times at the mic, that's it, you're cut off. And then this way, let's be efficient, let's have it, you know, everybody needs to debate, this is important. But also, if you're going to amend an article, I'm going to recommend or request that you write in advance your motion to amend, because you already know what it is. Sometimes they happen on the floor, somebody amends and then somebody else amends, that's different. But if you're going to make a motion to amend, write it in advance, have it ready, so that when you come forward to make the motion to amend, you can just give it to myself because the town clerk has to have that in writing. Then we don't have that time on the floor where we're waiting for somebody to write it up and do it. So do it in advance, if you'd like to send it to my Gmail account, that's Janet M. Wallace, W A, M as in Mary, W A L L A C E at Gmail dot com. Send me your motions to amend in advance, I will keep them private and confidential, I will put them in my file, I'll be able to call upon you to make your motion to amend. So that way, it can be done in advance, we already have them, and then on the morning of, I will disseminate it as the motion, as the article is called, I will be able to give a copy of that motion directly to the board, the clerk. So we can keep it quiet, I know people don't want these all known, can keep it all quiet, I don't need to disseminate it, and then that way, we can even be more efficient. But I do ask everyone, if you can, one, get out, come, vote, it's your town meeting.
That's the most important thing. Come to town meeting.
Right, it's your legislative body, yeah. It's your legislative body, we're making dramatic changes, there's always changes, budget's important unto itself, but also that to get out there, and especially this year in regard to our five marijuana articles, and then we have the manganese, we have the white wastewater treatment, which is a huge issue as well. So again, come out, come to town meeting, come and vote. Second night is May seventh, two thousand and nineteen, seven o'clock, Kingston Intermediate School, seven p.m. And that would be when, at seven p.m., we will call those four, those five articles even out of order, just so that we can have some efficiency going forward. So I think that's about it. So I want to thank Carl Pike for being here with me today, it's always great to have his insight because he's looked over the budget, they've gone through it with a fine-tuned comb, they know, I haven't, they know all of this much better, so I appreciate your insight.
Thank you.
And citizens, I'm sure, appreciate your insight. I also want to thank the Finance Committee for all their hard work, they work very hard for people who have no compensation whatsoever, and it's a lot of hours and a lot of time, so greatly appreciate all of the hard work that you guys do in, every year.
Thank you.
So thank you all, and again, this concludes the Moderators Town of Kingston Town Meeting Preview. Thank you so much, and hope to see you on May fourth, nine, Kingston Intermediate School. Be there or be square.
Yes.